We'll call the council work session for Monday, July 7th to order at 6:00 PM. And ask the city recorder to call the roll.
Council President Briggs?
Here.
Council Barry Antos is absent. Counselor Blaser?
Here.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Here.
Counselor Holesapple?
Here.
Counselor Jans?
Here.
Counselor Schilling?
Here.
Here.
Counselor Spivey?
Have a quorum. All right. The agenda talks about the council goal semi-annual report. Are you ready, Brian?
Yeah, we're ready, Mayor Slack. So just to kind of introduce the topic, and as I do, I'll invite our Public Works Director Jennifer Ward to come up to the podium. She'll be our first presenter. The city council set your goals back in February and March and April of this year. Part of that goal process was for the staff to come and kind of give a semi-annual report. It was a quarter of the report, but they're two-year goals. So every six months, we'll come in and give a report, probably in July and December, January of each year. So this is our first report. So kind of how we have this structured is I had all of the department heads who have a kind of an area of responsibility for any of the objectives within the goals to present a work plan for how that goal is going to be worked on and were achieved over the planning horizon of the goal period, the next two years. So that's included as an attachment, which is Attachment B to this report. And then we're going to give kind of an oral presentation on those work plans. If there's been progress made on any of the goals and objectives, we'll highlight those as we go. So we'll start with our Public Works Director, and then up after that will be our Economic and Community Development Director, followed by our Police Chief, myself, and then our Fire Chief to wrap it up. So I'll turn the time over to Jennifer.
Sorry, is that picking me? Yeah, it is. Thank you, Manager Latta. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. Nice to see you this evening. As you can see, quite a few of your goals relate to public works projects, and those are accounted for in the report that was given to you. So I'm not going to go through each one, one by one, because when we look at these, they kind of fall into categories. So I thought I'd kind of address the larger categories. The first, there are several goals relating to increasing our city water supply. So obtaining our water rights permit, because we're getting additional water, hope to, designing the new dam, securing funding for the new dam, and then related to that, it's not happening up at Mercer, but it's the James Howe Reservoir that will increase our storage as well. So those are all related to increasing water supply, and you can expect that most of those projects are going to be ongoing in different stages of planning and implementation over the two-year period for which you set these goals. Right now, our main focus is on getting those water rights permits. And as you saw in your, in the reports, that there's kind of two parts to that. The first is what I've learned is called a kaizen meeting. And that's a meeting that involves like all of the stakeholders, like the regulatory entities that have any interest in water, in fish habitat. There's, I think there's like 35 on the list of invitees. That is scheduled. That is happening next Wednesday. I'll be in attendance in that, along with our engineers from Jacobs and some other city staff. So that's happening, and will be completed soon. We are also, we still need to finish up the bypass study, the mitigation and bypass study, and that is also in the works and should be completed this fall. So that's kind of where, for that larger umbrella of goals, that's kind of where the emphasis is right now. Also, you notice that nearly all of our plans need to be updated over the course of these two years. So that's our Water Master Plan, Sewer Master Plan, Stormwater, Parks, and Transportation. And I just want to point out that with the Water Master Plan, that's not an entire, that's not an overhaul of the entire plan. We're just looking at the CIP section and updating that. That is in the works. That should be wrapped up before the end of this calendar year. The Sewer Master Plan is also scheduled to be completed by the end of this calendar year. Looking forward, next fiscal year will be Stormwater and Parks. The Transportation Safety, Transportation Systems Plan, the TSP, is in the works. We kind of outlined the different steps that we're in on that, and right now, we're on step five, the future conditions analysis. We're being helped by that, by a contractor. Little behind the initial schedule for that, but still ongoing. So that's plans. And then kind of the next category is parks. Several of your goals were related specifically to parks, so I can talk about those. They've all been, work has started or is mostly completed for a lot of them. So the improved lighting in the parks, we have replaced light bulbs in the lighting over by Roger Jordan along the, not in the Aquatic Center parking lot, we've already done those upgrades. But this year, we went, we have already replaced the lights in that parking lot along Walnut, so sort of that north side of Roger Jordan. And then the other place where we have lighting in our parks is City Park. And we've already replaced a number of those. Most of them have been replaced on the old side of the park, and there are plans then this fiscal year. We have about 15 more to replace, and that will, that will replace all of those in City Park. And that's not a matter of just like upgrading them. It's just, as you noticed, there were plenty that weren't functioning at all. So we'll have functioning lighting in City Park. Trail connection, that is going to be an ongoing process, long past these two years, probably long past my tenure with the, with the city, maybe even my lifetime, because there's, there's lots to do. As you're aware, the segments of the trail that have been completed were kind of quote-unquote "the easy ones." The ones that remain are either, they're just difficult to do. They're either technically difficult, or there's landowners that we need to work with. Maybe the land isn't quite available yet, or the development that we're planning on hasn't happened yet. But that's one thing that we're tracking. For the, not this fiscal year, but next fiscal year, the completion of the Fer Villa section of the trail is scheduled as a CIP. That's the very eastern side of the trail, the Eastern Terminus. So that will be completed. We have, we have drawings for, we have 100% design for the Mill section of the trail, which kind of picks up kind of where it ends right now, a little bit past the Dog Park, and will then carry us into downtown. We really want to make that, that, we want to connect from Ian Tony to the Dog Park and Roger Jordan. And so we have design for that. There's possibilities of, part of that is development-driven. So there are different sections of that that are in different, different stages of being complete. So ongoing on that one. Increase recreational opportunities and also the promotion of them. So those are two different goals. We have increased recreational opportunities already. I'm excited that this year, instead of three weeks of summer camp, we're able to offer five. Starting the end of this month, we are currently in talks with a variety of parties for different uses, for what we call the party room over at the Aquatic Center, some recreational activities that we haven't been able to offer before, and that's a space that's a little bit underutilized that maybe we could use. Of course, you know that the pickleball courts are in the planning, and that will offer further recreational opportunities. And then the promotion of them, that's, we've, working closely with Allison, our communications specialist. We have put out our second year of the Activities Guide that captures those recreation opportunities, not just the ones that are offered by the city, but things that other, like the Sounds of Summer, which the Dallas Downtown Association is putting on this year. Other things that are happening in the community are captured there. We use social media. We've got the website. I always have a Parks and Recreation update in the city newsletter. So really trying to get the word out about the fun things that there are to do in Dallas, and welcome ideas for maybe venues that we, that we haven't tried. So those were kind of like the three main umbrellas that I saw going through. And then there are kind of some one-offs that didn't really fit in any category. And one is the upgrade to our filters at our water treatment plant. That's on track to begin construction in October. The Lock Rail Node Sewer, so we are Phase One, which is connection of Hawthorne up to Ellendale. That is underway right now, going well, should be completed early this fall. And then we're in the very beginning stages of Phase Two, which is, which will take sewer access into the node itself to accommodate development there. And we'll begin that process, the design, the bidding, and hopefully have that phase completed fall of next year. And then lastly is the Public Works Building. If you've been down to the site, you know that the old one has been demolished, and construction has begun on the, on the new one. And we have a completion date for that of spring of 2026. And right now, as of this report, I think we'll make that. So that's all I have to share with you.
Any questions for our Public Works Director?
Mr. Shane?
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that the Public Works Building is on track, because of course, when it's done, it's going to bring in some money. But yeah, I have a couple of questions in no particular order.
Okay.
The big meeting next Wednesday with the 30-some-odd people, and it's been half a century since we did anything like this. So I guess we don't really have any kind of baseline of experience to look at. But is there any reason to think that there are going to be any real dug-in active resistance on the part of anybody?
No, no, I don't think so. I don't have those concerns going into it. Some of the people that will be there are, you know, ones that we've been in contact with, that are familiar with the project. Others of them aren't. So a significant amount of the time, it's just going to be us saying, here's the, here's our project, you know, here is why we need this, why we think this is the way to do it, other options that we explored, why we've landed on building a new dam and building it here, and just giving them the opportunity to become acquainted with the, with the project and to, you know, to ask questions so we can kind of answer those, get ahead of those, anticipate what sort of, again, I wouldn't say like obstacles or pushback, but maybe what?
Issues.
What issues, you know, any of the concerned parties, regulatory agencies might have as we continue down this path.
Can I ask that we get an update on that meeting after it's happened? Either at a work session or even by email. Just tell us how it went.
Yeah, we could give you an update. That wouldn't be a problem. I would just add to that that with the kaizen meeting, and really the purpose like Jennifer said, is to just get all of the regulatory agencies, interested parties, just really familiar with the project. There's not, this isn't like a required meeting, but it's just recommended for these major projects that involve a lot of different agencies, where there's going to be coordination and communication needed. Just brings everyone in the same room at the same time before we start actively applying for, you know, construction permits or things of that nature. The impoundment, the storage permit, has already been applied for. We're working through that. Jennifer talked about the biological study that needs to be wrapped up this fall. As we do that work, we also have to get our land use permit from the county as part of that, or at least a land use concurrence. One of the things I think we're learning is that there's not a lot of new dams that have been built in Oregon recently. And with the staff at the state level who are reviewing these, our application, they often are learning as they go as well. So I think the process, we should expect it to take a long time, take time, learn as we go. But I think we're on a good path in this kaizen meeting. Hopefully, it will just help us to, you know, bring everyone together and really understand what it is we're trying to accomplish.
My question was really directed at whether we're anticipating any unpleasant surprises. It doesn't sound like you have any reason to think that at all.
I would say the only, you know, the only kind of water watch group that's been involved so far has been Water Watch at Oregon, and they, they signed on just as an interested party to our impoundment permit. They'll have an opportunity to provide any comments or feedback once the provisional approval has been notified and issued by the state. So there's a period by which they'll accept those comments. And so we expect they'll probably hear something from them, but not anything concerning yet.
Second question, this, I guess, almost answers itself, but just for the sake of dotting the i's. The master plan updates that you're going to be doing, that you are doing, I assume that all the necessary stuff that we need for the Lock Rail Node is going to be folded into those?
As far as?
Sewer water, et cetera?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Because you talked about some of the specific things you're doing, and I just wanted to make sure they are in the plan.
That they get captured by?
They either are in the plan or are going to be.
Yeah, that they get captured by the plants.
Yeah, exactly. John Barnard Park, when it's, are we anticipating any kind of formal dedication ceremony or ribbon cutting or anything like that for it?
Yes, yes, we are. And because we had funding from the Trailblazers, it should be quite the event to actually. Right. So I am, I'm kind of waiting till I have a firmer completion date. I would expect probably September is what I'm thinking. That's what I'm hoping. That's what I'm hoping.
And the last question, when we're fully built out with the pickleball carts, how many are we going to have?
10 at the new site at City Park, and then of course, we'll retain the ones that we have over by Roger Jordan already.
That's all I had.
Any other questions from councilors? All right, thank you, Jennifer.
So next, Mayor will invite our Economic and Community Development Director Charlie Mitchell up, and then following his report, we'll have our Police Chief, Dray Mott.
Thanks, Brian. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So my department, there's 10 objectives that spans across three different goal areas. And they're kind of a mixture of objectives that have more project-related with firm sort of deadlines, as well as some that are discontinuous. And so in fact, it's probably about half and half. So some of them actually have timelines, some of them don't. Just kind of walking through real quick, starting with Goal Two, which is balanced economy. My department owns this entire goal, so all of the objectives are under my department. The first one, the adoption of the Lock Rail Node Master Plan, yay, we did that one already. So we can, we can cross that one off. And actually, the stated deadline for that was June 30th, so we, we met that goal. And we'll see, there's another objective that relates to kind of some of the next steps with that. The next one is solicit and secure development partner for 791 Main Street. Well, we did half of that one. We did the solicitation, but we have not secured development partner for that. And so right now, we're in the process of working with our consultant and amending that professional services agreement to see how far we can continue to go with that consultant on refining some next steps and determining what our, what our strategies are going to be moving forward on that. That's kind of where we're at on that one. Attracting businesses to Dallas, that's just kind of an ongoing effort. There's a summary of some of the things we've done included in the staff report. Most kind of recently timely, as I mentioned in the last sentence there, is we're working with the realtor representing the right-of property. And by the way, that is a separate corporate-owned building and property. It's not, it's not associated with, with anything else. And we proactively reached out and had to do some searching to find the right person to connect with the broker representing the corporation on that one. And so right now, there's at least two different leads of interest in that that we're aware of. And it's our understanding that that property is going to go out actually for auction. They're going to accept bids. If you recall how we did the 791 Main Street, it sounds like it's kind of a similar, similar process. Excuse me. The next one is rezoning of the Lock Rail Node. That's kind of what I was referring to a moment ago. It's kind of one of the next steps. And there's a timeline for that that carries us about another year out into the future. We've outlined some of those steps, and so you'll be seeing activity on this one later this year. Some things will be coming to you as we kind of move forward with that. Next one, 2.5 is again, an ongoing sort of objective, continue business-friendly environment. There's some activity summarized there in the staff report. Nothing notable to really call out there, but we are proactively calling on and meeting with a number of local businesses every, every, every month. The last one on that section is the development and adoption of the Mill Site Development Plan. Again, we did complete this just about a month ago. And we're now beginning to talk about what our next steps are for that. We're still waiting on the final report on the TGM project from the consultants. So once we have that, we'll have a more clear framework, at least as it's suggested and recommended by the consultant in terms of what our next step should be. We kind of know what the next steps are, but we don't fully know yet what the prioritization of those next steps are, because we can't take everything on all at once. And so we'll be looking to refine that. More than likely, as it's noted in the staff report, the Ash Creek piece of it's going to be the biggest, most costly part of this whole project. And arguably, it's one of the first things that probably needs to be done. So it's going to take us some time to tackle that one. Moving on to Goal Four, we have a couple objectives in that goal, which is welcoming community. They're both continuous goals. One is attract businesses to support recreation tourism. We haven't fully molded this into sort of our work plan, because we do have an adopted economic development strategy that was adopted by the council, recommended by the Economic Development Commission a few years ago. This activity was not included in that, and so we're figuring out the best ways to kind of mold it into the work that we're already doing. And you can see that's captured there as best as we could. We've still got to kind of refine that, I think, a little bit. Next one is partner with local and regional organizations to promote tourism in Dallas. I think we made a lot of progress on this as we sort of build in our relationship with the consultant, with the Chamber, with Explore Dallas, as well as some of our other regional partners. I think the product that we're putting now is a much more professional, consistent product than what we put out in the past. The last section related to my department is pieces of Goal Five, which is recreation. The first one is a continuous goal of supporting more community events through community partnerships. I know this has been a vision of the city manager for some time in terms of just sort of getting the city out of the event business, as we like to say, and finding good homes for those community events, those great community events. We're getting closer and closer all the time. This will be the first full season that we've really successfully handed off Sounds of Summer to the Dallas Downtown Association, for example. There's some other events listed there, too, that, again, we're sort of divorcing our leadership role and empowering others to take on those community events. And so far, I think that's gone very well. The city will continue to always be a partner in those events, whether it's, whether it's providing staffing support, logistical support, or funding support as it's needed. And then the last one is a very specific objective about development code revision to prioritize larger park space. This is kind of a joint objective with, with Public Works and Parks specifically. And the deadline for this is about a year out. And so we'll continue to update on this. As is noted in the staff report, one of the things that needs to happen is the development of a new parks master plan. And so as you heard just a moment ago from Jennifer, that's one of the things that's going to be in the works. But it's our opinion at this stage that the rest of the tasks related to the accomplishment of that objective are dependent upon the development of a new parks master plan to fully implement that. And I think that's it. So I'm open for questions.
Questions for Charlie, Mr. Holesapple?
Regarding the Main Street project?
791 Main?
You said you were going to go back with the planner and look at that. I know, I know there was, I know that there was a lot of public input regarding what desire the members of the community had about what they wanted to see there and that. I also know that there's been a whole development plan based off of that public input and all that. My understanding is that was a bit of a roadblock for some of the developers that came in and took a look at it? Is that correct?
It's possible. I can't say for certain that the two primary end uses, if that's what you're referring to, were considered roadblocks to the developers, because that's sort of the lens that we went out, you know, and that's what we were trying to attract. And so...
So is that part of the review that you're doing with the planner?
Well, that's a great question. We, we're not anticipating sort of starting the whole process over. We certainly could do that if we're not successful with our current effort. But it's, as far as I'm concerned, we're going to continue to try to attract those same kinds of developers. We just may have to refine our strategy to attract them. That's not to say that we still may come to a point, at some point in the future, where we've exhausted all of that line of thinking, and we have to look at restarting the whole process over. But right now, that's not what we're considering.
So any questions? Mr. Briggs?
Charlie, it's obvious you guys have really done a good job expanding our relationship with the Chamber and the local businesses. That's really a remarkable difference in the last six years that I've been involved. What are you doing to attract businesses outside the city and potentially the state to expand the businesses coming in?
Great question. We don't really have the resources allocated for us independently to do proactive business recruitment. What we do instead is we rely on our partners like Sedcor and the State of Oregon. And so we rely on their leads, and then we, you know, we work those leads, or we see if they don't fit, they don't fit Dallas, then we don't, we don't spend any time on them. So that's kind of the extent of the, sort of the, what I would call classic business recruitment. I've done classic business recruitment in my career, going to trade shows, doing the real aggressive, you know, campaigns. They're very costly, and they often don't yield a lot of results. I'm not saying I'm against them, but you really have to go into that strategy with your eyes wide open. The other thing that we, that you have to have is a real product to sell. And you have to have, you know, willing, willing property owners or billing owners that, you know, are ready to go on their property. And that's one of the things we struggle with in Dallas, especially on the industrial side, is we don't have the combination of ready sites and ready owners. Like for the Mill Site, for example, we have a ready owner, but not a ready site. We have some other sites that are great, but we don't have willing property owners. And so it's just trying to find this combination of things. On the commercial side, that could change once the Lock Rail Node kind of gets a little bit closer to development. We could... bit closer to development. We could explore getting a little bit more aggressive if we need to, trying to attract development. Again, once we have willing property owners, infrastructure in place, and we can help partner with those property owners to help them market their properties.
To see if, you know, as we develop the mill property, it might not be a bad idea to look at investing early on into marketing rather than all of a sudden, now we have this land available today. Okay, now let's put up a marketing plan together. We'd lose a year or two, or we kind of do it, you know, together in parallel.
Agreed, yeah.
Maybe look at investing a few dollars into that.
Yeah, a lot of it's just going to be timing. I mean, we have to make sure that we have a site, you know, if we're marketing it as a site that's ready for development, it needs to be ready for development. And I think we're still some time away from that. But you're right, we don't, it's just like with the Lock Rail Node. I mean, it's, timing is everything. And we got to time it right.
Counsel Shane.
Yeah, I'd like to sort of follow up or piggyback on something Larry was asking, or actually, something you said in response to what he was asking. The problem that you face with industrial recruitment of having either good properties without cooperative owners or converse, when we're talking about commercial activity, retail activity, is it basically the same situation, or is it a different set of issues there? And I ask because with the Lock Rail Node coming along, one of the reasons we're doing that is to get more commercial activity.
We haven't really had the luxury since I've been here of having available, marketable commercial land for development. So, we haven't even had to entertain that.
So, there's no real baseline to go by?
Not really. And, you know, downtown properties, they change over and they become available so frequently, it's hard to sort of, you know, get behind marketing a particular property. We do work with, like, for example, we're working with Dan Drizeus right now on the former Antique Mall, you know, space and trying to find, help him find some tenants for that space. But, so, I guess to answer your question, we just, we haven't had what I would call a prime commercial site that's ready for development because we just don't have any.
Oh, we certainly don't. That's one of the reasons we're trying to.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying. The landscape could change once we get, a year from now with the Lock Rail Node.
Any questions for Charlie? Thank you so much.
All right. So, next up will be our Police Chief, Jerry Mott. So, we'll invite him to come up and present his report. Following him, I'll present on a couple of goals I have.
Good afternoon. It's in the interest of brevity because you guys all have their report. I'm just going to summarize. Our goals are all under one, community safety, ensure safe, responsive, and reliable safety system for growing community through investments in infrastructure, community outreach, and disaster preparedness. One, one, secure funding, complete design, build a new police station. So, as everybody knows, May 2025, the voters rejected the bond. They sent us all, council and staff, back to the drawing board to look at different solutions going forward to satisfy that. Some timeline considerations there, the November 2025 election cycle or possible election cycles in 2026. Citizens, volunteers, council need to decide what appropriate action going forward is related to that. It's an ongoing effort. One point two, conduct community education outreach on publics or on police station bond measure. This presumes a future measure is the direction council chooses is most appropriate. So, we all know a lot of community outreach was done ahead of the last bond effort, which failed. We recognize some things we learned from that. We need to do more to educate the community members on the facts associated with the need of the police facility. Do a better job explaining why it costs so much more to build a police facility over a standard commercial building or residential building to mitigate or correct some incorrect information that's floating around the public, around our community relative to the project, and provide some positive and accurate feedback to those folks. And to continue to do those things on an ongoing basis ahead of any future efforts and even after those efforts have concluded, no matter which way they work out. So, the next two I have are one point four, improve public outreach with community organizations to support community disaster preparedness, and one point six, increase community-led crime prevention efforts. Example, neighborhood outreach, community partners. Those two really, there's an efficiency to working those two hand in hand. And that's kind of the approach that we're taking right now as we go through and meet with community organizations like HOAs and community clubs and try to recruit those into our, to community preparedness for disaster by doing things like creating an inventory of evacuation sites within regions of the city. That same group are the people that I'm, that we're talking to about things like Neighborhood Watch or our SCRAM program. Rather than ask those same people to stand up new organizations, asking for the existing organizations to become part of those programs or to feed into those programs, we're asking people to do less and have a lesser costing of time and money to get more results out of us. To that end, we began meetings on July 1st. We, Alice and I went to Saras Glen, spoke to their HOA. The group entirety, entirely, we have a tentative meeting with the Bridlewood HOA Executive Board members, some of them on July 9th, and be reaching out to some of the community clubs and some clergy organizations, school administrators, to set up future meetings soon. We're going to try to recruit for things like Neighborhood Watch and evacuation inventory locations pretty aggressively through our social media in the next few months ahead of winter when we might potentially need those evacuation centers. So, and that's it for me.
Questions for our Police Chief, Jerry Mott?
Thank you, Jerry.
Just a mechanical question. You're meeting with the Bridlewood HOA. That's Wednesday. What time?
It's 3:30. I'm working that out with Dave Mott.
Okay.
And I have some other board members to call to work out with.
I'll talk to Dave.
I think I'm here in the council, so I'm going to give the city manager's office report. We had two goals and one objective under each goal to kind of take the lead on. First was under Goal Three, Community Growth. It was item 3.13, which was the council priority 13 of 13, meaning it's the bottom of the priority of that goal. But, and that was to conduct a space planning analysis to inform renovation recommendations to increase efficiency at City Hall. So, essentially, with the new Public Works Building getting constructed, we're going to have a whole kind of division of Public Works relocate out of City Hall. Right now, we're very crammed in City Hall. Our Economic and Community Development Department located on the second floor is kind of on this side of the building, you know, on the east side and also on the west side. And it's just disjointed. So, we started, we hired a contractor to look at kind of the second floor of the building back in February before this was even a goal of the council. And so, while we received low prioritization, it kind of received, you know, the first bite of the apple of getting work done. So, that analysis for the space planning has been completed. And we have kind of a layout and a concept design that was delivered recently. City staff will just take an opportunity to kind of evaluate that, look at it, and maybe do some additional design work to get it ready for construction. So that if in the future we'll have an opportunity to do some renovation, we can do that upstairs. Really kind of looking at, you know, taking some existing office spaces, renovating those to be more efficient, to be able to put more employees in those spaces, so that we can get all of economic and community development on one side. We're also looking at creating a better customer experience. As you come up the stairs right now, you kind of don't know where to go. So, we're going to knock out a wall and put in a kind of a front counter desk. It'll also provide us a secure access so that the only kind of public spaces up here will be this room and the foyer, the top of the stairs and the restroom. Everything else will be behind locked, secure doors to provide just better security for our staff and our assets behind those doors. So, that's kind of what we're looking at. We're also looking at taking the room kind of off this room, which right now is used for office spaces for employees. And we would convert that into a jury room for court days. It would also be a shared office space for everyone in this room that I'm looking at, except our attorney. But the mayor and council could have an opportunity to have a shared office space there. It would also dovetail and also work as a conference room if needed for the employees up here when not being used. So, it'd kind of be a shared space for a lot of different uses. So, we're looking forward to that. The next goal was Goal Four, welcoming community. This was the item 4.2, which was to develop a 2050 community vision. So, right now, the city operates underneath the 2030 vision statement. We're just a few years away from hitting 2030. So, as we approached that, we felt it would be a good time to kind of engage in a community visioning process, again, with the council taking the lead on that. So, we're looking at engaging with the council at the beginning of next calendar year, 2026, to say, hey, let's go get a consultant to help us do this work. We'll then send out an RFP, get a consultant on board. And over the next, the year after that of 2026, going into 2027, be able to kind of do a community visioning and engagement process, with the council taking the lead on that, kind of writing a new 2050 vision for the community and having that work completed by the end of calendar year 2026. That's what I have. Any questions?
Questions for Brian?
Employees are going to be transferred over to the new building from here.
So, from kind of the west side of City Hall over to the east side, we would relocate one, two, three employees would be moved over there. In kind of the middle space, we have three employees working there right now. Two of those, two of the, one of those employees would move on the west side of the building. The Public Works employees that would be moving to the new Public Works Building, we have one, two, three, four, five, six employees that would be moving over. Yeah. So, six of the engineering and Public Works employees would move over to the new building. We would move four employees that aren't currently located back there over in that space. So, our permit tech would move back to where the rest of the building division is in the southeast corner of the building. So, we'd move our permit tech back. We would still have a front counter reception for the Economic and Community Development behind the front counter. The planner, who's currently located back with the building folks, would move to the northeast corner of the building, along with our Economic and Community Development staff and code services.
So, if someone comes in to discuss permitting business, they would be stopped at the foyer here?
Yeah, they'd be greeted right here. Whether you came up the elevator or the stairs, you'll be greeted with Ben's smiling face.
Would come up and meet them here. They wouldn't wander around the building?
So, right, they wouldn't wander around. If they had like a set of plans, say they wanted to lay out some plans and talk through, you know, their development project, there will be a meeting space with a table kind of behind that front counter where there's a couple of desks right now, like where Ben and Megan currently sit. That would be an area where we would lay a table down with some chairs, so kind of a quasi-open conference area where, you know, staff could come out, building inspectors or plans reviewers, our permit tech, planner, you know, whoever could come out and they'd have a workspace there they could work at. We would retain the conference room on the east side of the building and then we would add the conference kind of shared space on the west side.
Chilling you have a key to the back door.
Correct. Situation, you could use that, you know, the jury room slash conference room workspace.
The common copy of that stuff in the west area.
It would stay where it is. We would relocate the door from the north side of that room to the west side so that it would be accessed off the hallway instead of through that kind of common workspace.
Questions for Brian? Thank you, Brian.
Last presentation tonight will be from our Fire Chief, Chief Wallace.
Mayor, councilors. So, our community goal was Goal One, community safety, to ensure safety, responsive, and reliable public safety system for a growing community through investments in infrastructure, community outreach, and disaster preparedness. Our goal specifically was 1.3, plan for future needs of fire response with projected community growth, increased height of buildings and access, updates to training and fire codes, et cetera. We have tried to stay on the forefront of this, knowing that this development is impending our area. We've been proactive with training where we've had nine members of our department, including volunteers, train in rope rescue, which will aid in the accessibility of the height of the building and also with our limited access with maybe not being able to get our ladder truck into certain areas. They've been, I don't know if any of you have been driving around in the daytime, but we do quite a bit of training in the daytime. So, it's continuous training. They'll have the ladder truck out there, training with rope rescue. We also contract for services through Polk County Fire District Number One for their fire marshal, who's deeply involved in our development review team and follows those processes, follows that process pretty much to the end stage. And then we also have a continuing partnership with Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office with our fire marshal if we are in the need of having any kind of inspection or any type of enforcement that needs to go along with that. So, that's pretty much my update for our goals.
Questions for April? Counsel Shane.
Just one. The, one of the elephants in our extended room, I guess, is the fact that we know we're going to need a different ladder truck when buildings get bigger. In today's dollars, what would that cost us if we were going to go and start the process right now? We're not, of course, but what would it, what would we be looking at if that were the case today?
Probably about $3 million. And then the other part to that as well is you would be looking at probably a two to a three-year build time.
Take forever, but I just wondered what it was going to cost.
Currently, our ladder is sufficient for our needs. And like I said, we're doing additional steps with the training with the rope rescue. We're using our ladder in a manner that it's probably been never used before. You have to keep in mind that we're a fairly new fire department, career staff-wise, right? We have been staffed with volunteers for over 150 years, only the last five years with career staff. And so, we're a fairly young department. And we're growing right along with the city, right? And so, we're taking opportunities to be creative and use the tools that we currently have to be able to meet those needs.
I just wondered. I mean, we're going to have time to deal with it because none of this is going to happen fast, including the development. But I just wondered.
Correct.
Questions?
Do we have a five-story building on the books right now?
Yeah, we have, we have one that's going through the permit process. It's been approved through planning, so.
I believe our ladder truck would service that, would it?
Talking about the one next to the bowling alley?
Um, that's tough to answer without actually seeing it set up. I will tell you right now, if we did need to set our ladder truck up, we would take the entire roadway on Main Street, right? Or the entire roadway on Walnut Street. Our ladder would not, the accessibility on that property is not going to be conducive for our ladder truck. And as far as the extended reach of it, that would be something that we would need to talk about when that time comes as far as accessing the roof access and that kind of thing.
See detailed plans?
Discuss during the permitting process, or?
It is. You know, that's, there's also additional standards that are required so that, you know, apparatus like ladder trucks aren't always needed. So, you know, ensure you have sprinkler systems in those buildings, right? So that if there's a fire that takes place, hopefully, the internal systems, you know, take care of that so you're not having to, you know, actively fight fire from apparatus on the exterior as much. So, I mean, you know, there's things that are taken into consideration, you know, like that. But yes, we talk about that in the.
And although we would like to rely heavily on a ladder truck, we do rely very heavily on our staff, right? Not always is the ladder truck going to be in service, or maybe it's on another call. So, we're training our staff to the level of how to fight a fire on a five-story building, carrying, you know, sections of hose, making sure that the sprinkler system in this building is functioning because that's going to be, that's going to be the key, right? To make sure that all those safety features are in effect so we can go in there and do our job with minimal amount of risk. Yeah.
Questions for Chief Wallace? All right, thank you.
That's our report for tonight.
Any other questions for staff? Any other business? We'll adjourn the work session.